All right. Good evening. Let us call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. My name is Danielle Bass, Chair of this Neighborhood Board. You are here at the Waikiki Melamani Neighborhood Board. We are a full board of 23 members, and today is Wednesday, February 26th, is 7:31 at Milani High School. Let's begin this meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know. Okay, everyone, just gonna do some housekeeping real quickly, just a friendly reminder. This is a hybrid meeting, so there are people both online and in person. Friendly reminder that if you are a board member and you have questions, please raise your hand. We are only entertaining questions from board members. Members of the audience and public are able, according to OIP, to submit comments, questions, and opinions, but board members, questions only. With, so with that, I will recognize Rachel for roll call, so we can establish quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. When I call your name, please let me know if you're here. Rana? Here, thank you. Among? Yeah, I saw among here. Yep. Bass?
Present.
Thank you. Harmadi?
Here.
Thank you. Dahl?
Here.
Thank you. Flores? Thank you. Breed? Stefan?
Here.
Thank you. Kadeh?
Present online.
Thank you. And then, Kanaaki? There, here. Thank you. Kim? Here. Bukka? Darsha Lee?
Present online.
Thank you. Marilyn Lee?
Here.
Thank you. Nabamine? Thank you. Ozawa? Park? Ross? Thank you. Segura?
Here.
Thank you. Smart? Sercina?
Present.
Thank you. Kennard?
Here.
Thank you. Williams?
Present online.
Thank you. And then, we have 18 board members present. Thank you.
Okay. Now, folks, just as a friendly reminder, I did receive a couple complaints from board members and members of the Milani community that our last couple meetings have gone long, although we have had some controversial stuff like sewage fees and various development concerns. That being said, let's try to keep our reports, our questions, and to the public, our comments brief. I'm gonna try to make sure that we get out here on a timely basis. Also, please note for those here in person, there will be like minor disruption. There will be some noise at around 8 o'clock. Milani High School is having a concurrent event, and they will be using the announcement speakers to gain the announcement or the attention of the Milani High School parents who are attending today. Without further ado, I'd like to recognize HFD for their report. Welcome.
Hello again. I'm Captain Tateishi from Milani Fire Station. So, I'm gonna give the statistics from January and from this area. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. Should you have any questions, please email the HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. So, incident statistics for January 2025. Fires, four structured fires, eight wildland brush fires, two nuisance fires, zero cooking fires, five activated alarms, no fire. Emergencies, 73 medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, five motor vehicle crashes/ collisions, one mountain rescue, zero ocean rescue, zero hazmat incidents. Fire safety tip for February: power outage preparedness. There are few ways you and your family can be prepared for a power outage. Prepare your supplies, ensure your flashlights, radios, et cetera contain batteries that are charged. Don't forget to charge extra batteries. Prepare your family, check in with family members. If anyone relies on medical devices requiring power, ensure you plan ahead of time. Prepare your food and water, set your fridge and freezer to the coldest settings, keep them closed as much as possible during an outage, fill up water containers for drinking and other needs. Protect your electronics, unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from power surges. Never touch down power lines. Always assume lines are energized and dangerous. For more safety tips, visit honolulu.gov/dem and learn more about power outages at wineelectric.com/storms. That's it. You guys, anyone have any questions?
Thank you so much. Questions from members of the Neighborhood Board as well as members of the public? Questions? Raise your hand. Hearing and seeing none, thank you so much. Have a quiet night. Next up, HPD.
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Frank, Sergeant out of Wyoming Police. Fill it in for the lieutenant. The month's statistics from January 25th to yesterday in this area. We had three assaults, zero robberies, two burglaries, and one unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle. We had total calls for service in this area was 711, and that includes various calls from parking complaints to noise complaints and whatnot. This month's safety tip is mail theft prevention. We're coming up on tax season, so check your mail daily. If you receive a lot of mail with sensitive information, you should consider getting a lock mailbox or a P.O. box. There's also a free app that USPS has. It's called Inform Delivery. You can use it to see what is, when you send mail out and what's coming in on that on a daily basis. So, you can use that app. And then, the one thing we wanna stress is victims of identity theft or financial crimes may take several months to years to recover their financial losses. So, just be vigilant with your mail. That's about it.
Thank you so much. Any questions from Neighborhood Board members as well as members of the public? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing and hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Next up, US Army. Welcome, Captain.
Hi, I'm Captain Block from 25th Combat Aviation Brigade. We have a February Job Fair. US Army Garrison Hawaii is hosting its next hiring fair on April 22nd at Aliamanu Military Reservation Gym, beginning at 08:30 a.m. and ending at 2 p.m. This is open to the public. There'll be job offers and provisional hiring on the day of the job fair. Advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com, click on the employment banner to learn of openings and how to apply online. Walk-ins are welcomed, and if you do walk in, you should bring two references: proof of ID, social security card, resume, or application. There are opportunities in business operations such as golf, bowling, food service, and many more. The Child Youth Services, or CYS, will also have openings to consider. For those who work in CYS, there's a variety of benefits such as retirement, access to all recreation facilities, discounted childcare training, and commissary/PX privilege. If you're interested in working with children, we have a position for you. Come on out and see what's available as employment opportunities wait. And then, my second announcement is that the Vietnam, National Vietnam Veterans Day Parade is coming up. So, to all who served in Vietnam, we thank you for your service and your sacrifice. The National Vietnam Veterans Day Parade will take place on Saturday, March 29th. We'll pay tribute to those who served our nation for the cause of freedom and liberty. The opening ceremony will begin at 4:30 p.m. at Fort DeRusi, and parade will begin at 6 p.m. along King Kalakaua Avenue in Waikiki. Marching vans, veterans groups, military units, as well as many community groups from Hawaii and the mainland will take part in this parade. For any concerns, please call our new community concern line with US Army Garrison Hawaii at 808-787-1528, or visit over email with the address usag.hawaii.comrel@army.mil.
Members, any questions? Members of the community, any questions for United States Armies, Civil Affairs, Army Garrison? Oh, please, oh, one second. Raise your hand. And, sorry, sorry. So, raise your hand. I recognize you. We ask members of the audience to come to the microphone for the well-being of everyone online so that they can hear you. Please introduce yourself and direct your questions. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luta. Robin Nelson, Melalani Sub-District One. Captain Block, I was wondering, with this hiring career fair, the Pentagon just dropped ban based on the executive order that all trans service members will be effectively kicked out of the military with a...
Excuse me, Robin. Can you speak into the mic? Thank you.
So, the Pentagon just dropped that trans service members will be receiving a medical discharge within the next policies to drop within the next 30 days officially. With this career fair, would individuals that are getting medically separated be able to acquire civilian jobs in that way? So, people that are within federal jobs can maintain some ability to keep their job in some aspect?
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone's eligible to apply, so if you've been separated from the military, you'll just put that on the resume, as long as it's not a dishonorable discharge. Usually, it's not an issue when you go to apply for jobs, but the job openings are for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the US Army at this time? Please raise your hand. Looking online. Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Board of Water Supply. Welcome, Kathleen.
Aloha, Board Chair and Board members. I'm happy to report we had no main breaks in your community last month, and we just wanna remind people we do have a water waste hotline. If you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, a malfunctioning sprinkler, a running faucet, excessive watering, or something similar, please let us know so we can follow up and stop the unnecessary water loss. And the easiest way to do that is give us a call at 808-748-5041. That comes right into our office, and we will call you back and get all the details. Let's make every drop count and do our part to conserve our precious and limited water supply. Water is life. Are there any questions?
Members of the Board, members of the community, are there any questions for the Board of Water Supply? Please raise your hand. Yes, Board Member Kim?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You folks handle both the potable, I mean, the water from the source, and then you also have the water that comes from the other side of the island. You folks have anything to do with that?
Water from the other side of the...
I forgot the name of that tunnel.
Oh, Honouliuli?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do the recycling. We get the, we get the water from the ENV, which is where Kohole located in the same spot. We take that and we recycle it and use it as our Wanda Water. A bunch of the grasses and everything out in Kapole.
And the Waikiki ditch?
Oh, that's not ours.
You don't do that at all?
That's not ours, no, no.
Are there any other questions for the Board of Water Supply? Emile?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question about the website. Is it possible to have auto-pay also for the bills?
Yeah, we do.
You do have auto-pay?
Yeah, we've had auto-pay for a long time, yeah. You can just sign up online. You sign up, you go set up your portal, and you should be able to set it up auto-pay.
So, it's linked to the credit card, and you charge extra charges?
I believe credit card or your checking account, yes.
Checking account is also?
Yeah, I believe so, yes. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I see another question. Karumi, go ahead.
Hello, Kathleen. My question is regarding the controversy of fluoride in our drinking waters. I had heard from someone that our wells monitored by the Board of Water Supply go through frequent shocking by, I guess, an independent entity, but they are using fluoride to shock those wells. How true is that?
That's completely false. I hate that. It's, no, not happening.
Okay. Any other questions for Board of Water Supply? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Aloha, Kathleen. All right. Next up, Sherry from Hawaii School Facilities Authority. Welcome.
Aloha, everyone. Sherry Nakamura from the Hawaii School Facilities Authority. I'm gonna have a prepared, I have a prepared speech, so I'm gonna just read it. Okay. The legislature proposed Milalani High School as one of the sites for the teacher workforce housing project on state property, and HISFA chose Milalani as the pilot site in 2023 to meet the critical need for workforce housing and to support teacher recruitment and retention in our state. Last September, HISFA has conducted and attended approximately 12 community meetings, including this Neighborhood Board meeting. The purpose of these meetings was to share our proposed project site, answer questions, and gather community feedback. Many in the community, including the school's teachers and students, expressed their concerns about the impact the teacher workforce housing on the initially proposed site on the upper campus would have on their programs. As a result of these meetings and community feedback, HISFA and the developer, Pacific Housing Assistance Corporation, looked into moving the project to another location. The proposed alternative site on Milalani High School's lower campus received positive feedback in the December meeting and during the feedback period in January. I am pleased to share that based on the feedback, we have finalized the location for the project to be at the alternative site on the Milalani High School lower campus adjacent to the athletic facilities. The new site does not impact any current structures or academic programs that would need to be relocated or disrupted. We recognize that there may be concerns about displacing parking, especially for students, so HISFA is proposing additional parking near the athletic fields and upgraded walkways. There are many more steps before we start construction. We recognize that there are some unanswered questions we will explore through other structured processes, including environmental assessments and community meetings. We would like to thank all of those who have taken time to attend our community meetings and the Neighborhood Board Chairs for your support in moving the conversation forward. And I would particularly like to thank this Board for its resolution supporting the project and recommending moving the site to the location that we have determined will be the site. So, our plan is to continue to update the community periodically through the Neighborhood Board meetings and the Milalani High School Community Council and on our website. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's great news, and thank you for working with our Board and listening to that resolution. Members, questions for Hawaii School Facilities Authority on their new location? Sabrina and Ann? Go ahead, Sabrina.
Thank you so much, Sherry, for coming to present that wonderful news. At this point in time, have any meetings been scheduled with the community in the future?
We haven't scheduled a particular community meeting, but we will be here every month as well as the Milalani High School Community Council meeting. So, I'm a standing, or the HISFA is a standing agenda item. If there is a need for a particular community meeting, we would be open to arranging one.
Ann, go ahead.
Yeah, aloha, everyone. Mahalo for that. That was, that's a great resolution. Something happens with agencies, in my opinion, but that was really good. My question is, again, the second part of, you know, undoable was the cost of the housing. And we heard over and over again, people testified that they would not be, teachers would not be able to afford the housing. So, is that being addressed and looked at?
Yes. We have heard loud and clear from the community that affordability is a concern, and so, we have taken that input, and we will be considering that as we move forward in the next steps of the process.
Okay, I see less has some...
Do you plan on having some information put out in the district to sort of warn people about the parking situation or the traffic increases that could possibly happen during the building and when the units are finally built, people start moving in?
Yes, we plan to do regular updates, so as soon as we get information that we feel is relevant or appropriate for the community, we will definitely communicate that.
Any further questions from members of the Board and the community? I see Brandon and then Karumi. Go ahead, Brandon.
Were there any funding discrepancies? So, there is still an environmental assessment that needs to be done? And then, the funding that was done and the assessing of the first spot, is there transfers of the remaining funds that transfer to the site processes now?
Are you talking about the funding that is, maybe you can repeat, can you repeat once more?
So, there were a few, like, $5 million amounts. I think there's a $5 million amount for the initial site assessment. And then, there was additional requirement for moving the site to do the next set of assessments. Is that, I guess, just comments on where you are in that process?
Yes, so moving the site will require additional funding, and it would depend on legislative support. So, the legislature is in a session right now, so we won't know for sure what that might be until the end of the session, which would be at the end of April. And then, you had another question about, was that the whole thing? There was another part of the question.
The other part was a confusion on if there were initial funds that didn't get transferred over
Oh, I see.
project as it is now.
Right. Even the initial $5 million would have depended on legislative support, so it's a continued legislative, I mean, a state contribution that would, that would be necessary.
Okay, Karumi.
I still think there's quite a number of unresolved issues, which is why I think the continuing community meetings are necessary. I'll just name a few. I don't, I'm not, still not comfortable that you're moving this apartment unit onto the campus, onto the school campus. The fact that it is a school campus, and there's no guarantee that it will be restricted in perpetuity for teachers. And I'm confused as to why we are still adamant about having it in Mililani when, if you're trying to reach your objective, which is to provide housing for teachers and at the same time, help the recruitment of teachers. I would think it would make sense to put this housing unit where we need the teachers, which is probably on the west side. And then, there are others, but I just mentioned two.
Thank you for your comments. We've heard them throughout this community engagement process, and so, we are definitely considering, like I said, affordability and traffic concerns. Of course, that's gonna be something that we'll have to consider. Regarding Milalani as a site, it was a directive from the legislature, and so, we are having to, we're not gonna change the site of Milalani. I think there's a lot of benefit of having the site here in Milalani. Number one, it's centrally located, so if teachers were to live here, it is still very commutable to the North Shore or the Leeward Coast. So, it is, and it's a beautiful place to live. You guys are lucky that you live in this beautiful community. So, I think there was a lot of positives just having the teacher housing project here, but we understand that it is going to be a change, and so, we are happy to continue to listen to the community concerns and incorporate that as much as possible in our plans going forward. It is gonna be an...
Actually, so Karumi. District Four. Point of clarification. Karumi. Acts 164 and Act 172 that were passed in 2023 were the laws that the state legislature passed, which essentially mandated, right, the SFA to build their pilot project here at Milani High School. And Principal Fred Murphy did attend the previous board meeting to say that he did support that, right? Though, the big problem here was he did support the location of the project being at Milani High School. So, did the DOE. The issue was where specifically on the campus, right? That's been, just for the public's, you know, knowledge, that's been the problem in, for this Board, right? Is a lot of our community leaders, Principal Murphy and our two senators, were very, were blindsided in a way because the proposed location was selected at Po'okeleva Street, when in fact, that was never discussed. Rather, the lower campus site was always up for discussion and the preferred site location for Milani High School. So, I don't think we should continue to debate whether or not it's at Milani High. If we, I mean, that's a matter for the legislature, and it would be a matter for the state to repeal that, right? So, unfortunately, Sherry's just trying to work on this endeavor, and this, and we gotta see the legislature fund the infrastructure necessary for that project.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Sherry, and I just appreciate it if you keep us informed upcoming community meetings. And if we need to somehow repeal this, we could do that as well through your information provided. Mahalo.
Any further questions for SFA? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Sherry. Thank you for sharing that good news. We look forward to seeing you at the meetings to come. Next up, we have a presentation from Milani YMCA about their fun run coming up in April. Welcome, Maisha.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the members of the Board. My name is Maisha. I work for the Milalani YMCA. Today, I'm here to present that we will be hosting our sixth annual 5K charity run. This event is gonna be on Saturday, April 26th. Check in for the run is at 6 a.m., and the race starts at 7:15. And we usually have this event as a family-oriented event, so all ages are welcome to participate, and our registration is out. And yeah, do you guys have any questions about our run?
Members of the Board, members of the community, are there any questions for Maisha? Please raise your hand. All right, seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Darsha. I'm gonna recognize you for a sec. Do you have a representative from Ke'alaho West Oahu?
Yes, Dahl is here.
Okay. Hi, welcome. Thank you for coming to our Neighborhood Board. Please begin your presentation.
Okay. Aloha, Madam Chair and fellow board members. My name is Valerie Kupiha Twiloma, and my agency is Ke'alaho West Oahu. Let me just first start off with our mission is to provide comprehensive case management services with aloha to individuals and families. We have two shelters, one emergency, one transitional. Our emergency shelter has 63 beds, 63 units. Our transitional shelter has 40. We also have permanent housing made up of eight five-bedroom homes in Makaha, and it's called Kahale Kahana for families that have a composition size of six to 12. This is a permanent housing master lease, so it's not like you need a referral to it. Anyone experiencing or having had experienced homelessness or at risk of being homeless can apply for these permanent housings. We also have two outreach teams. One is District Eight, which is on the west side. It's from Honaka Hale all the way to Makua, Makaha, Yokohama. And then, my region is Three and Five, and I oversee from Honaka Hale all the way through to Kapole, Barbers Point, Waipahu, Ebla Beach, Pearl City, Ia, Melanani Wahihua, Whitmore, Mukaliia, all the way up to Sente. So, our agency is responsible for 60% of this island for outreach services. Our outreach teams operate with multifaceted approach to effectively address the diverse population of individuals and families experiencing homelessness. Our teams often consisting of social workers, outreach coordinators. We partner with healthcare professionals, community volunteers. We conduct regular patrols across the island focusing on areas where homeless population are known to gather, such as urban centers, beaches, parks... such as urban centers, beaches, parks. We're equipped with supplies ranging from hygiene kits to pamphlets, anything to get connected to the homeless population. We have recently, and I want to acknowledge our partnership on January 24th with Representative Bichika's office with coordination to the cleanup of Kipapa Gauch, along with HPD, US Army Garrison, DOT. We partner with a lot of agencies and it takes a community to raise, you know, a child, but it takes honestly the state to try to end homelessness. Our number one barrier to what we do is the lack of resources. The low income is not low income enough for everybody who lives in Hawaii. The lack of resources for shelters, beds, this is across the state and into other states. A lot of boards in different communities wants to having Kahale's in their area. So there's lack of even those types of housing. But we prioritize and we try to build trust and rapport with the homeless community. I definitely get calls daily, emails daily, asking for, you know, community concerns. Can someone come out and service this person, that person? You know, and my job kind of is to educate the community as well. I have a calendar that I put all my community concerns on, which is connected to my team. We go to different areas throughout the week. I must say though, if you are, you or anyone you know is experiencing a homeless person or an unsheltered person that is irate, unsafe, please do not call outreach. Please call 911 HPD. Those are not the type of concerns that my team can address. If you're experiencing or know someone experiencing homelessness, been out on the streets, just can't, you know, doesn't know where to go, definitely, I'm going to put my information in the chat along with my agency's website. So you folks can reach out to the respective areas that that person needs assistance with. If they're out of my area, I am also very good with coordinating the outside regions and districts. So we are connected across the board as a COC for outreach for the other forty percent of the island. We want to make sure that people don't fall through the cracks. So if I get a call for someone who's in Kahuku, I will call that team and let them know. We collaborate, like I said, closely with local organizations, government agencies, stakeholders, any kind of support networks. And we try to work together alongside everyone, even Core. Core has come out to assist some of my clients. You know, I know people think that they're only four child, no, they go across the island. Yeah, that's pretty much all I have. I mean, if anybody has any concerns, like I said, about an individual or family, you can call my cell phone directly, which I'll put in the chat, and I will definitely get them connected as soon as I can.
Thank you so much, Val. Nice to meet you and thank you for that presentation. Members of the board, members of the committee, are there any questions for Val in her presentation? Yes, Ed.
Yeah, just one quick question. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering, you're doing such a fantastic job out there. How are you funded? And are you a nonprofit organization?
We are a nonprofit organization and we were founded in 2002. So we've been around for a while.
Yeah.
And, you know, federal, federal funds. And we also do HBO funds through the state.
Do you receive state as well as federal funds for your program?
Yes.
Any other questions from board members or members of the community? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Val, for your presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're going to move on to community concerns. At this time, are there, is there any community member who would like to come forward to express any comment or concern with decorum? Please leave, limit your comments to three minutes per the issue. Please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone online either. Okay. Seeing and hearing none. We're going to move on. My goodness, fastest meeting ever. Board business. I know, we're going to jinx it pretty soon. Board business, we're going to go to the minutes. I'd like to recognize our secretary Sabrina. Go ahead, Sabrina.
The minutes were sent out as corrected. Does anybody have any corrections? If not, I move to approve.
Second.
All right, and turn it over to Rachel for the acceptance.
Okay, so since no one has any amendments for the minutes, we'll pass the minutes as approved as written. Thank you.
Okay, so minutes have been passed. Great job. Okay, we're going to go into chairs and committee. Just one update, members, or actually two rather. For the part of my chair's report, I do want to thank the members of the board who have reached out to me. Some of you have, as I mentioned, were concerned about the late nights of our meeting. So moving forward, I will try to keep this before 10 o'clock and we will just, you know, keep, maintain the order of decorum for the meetings. Second, I did receive a few questions to agendize particular legislative bills. That hasn't been the practice of our board, mainly because the legislative session, it moves so fast and this is a very diverse board of twenty-three members. So we all have different points of views and opinions. And so, you know, to agendize a particular measure, have discussion and any type of presentation or action, resolution, motion, it would just actually delay your own democratic with a small d involvement with the legislative process. So again, historically, our board hasn't had much involvement in terms of opinions on legislation proposed because should we pass an opinion or some kind of resolution on that within the next month, maybe that bill is dead. So it would just kind of take up some time of our, our board. So I just wanted to put that clarification out. Second, as a more of a update is that we got good news from the Department of Parks and Recreation. They put up the new signs over at Ka'o Mike, Maiaku, Ten Acres Park that over where the hockey rink is. And so the, the signs have been changed for the, to reflect the park closure based on the resolution passed by this board to close at 10:00 PM and open again at 5:00 AM. So that's great news. The whole way hockey leave and various roller skaters within Mililani have been very appreciative and has thanked this board on social media and through various messaging. With that, are there any questions for me? Okay. Going to move on to Alex Ozawa. Is there a report for community partnerships and community outreach?
Oh, Chair, did you want me to announce something as well?
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you, Rachel. Before I move on to Alex, Rachel has some news that was brought to my attention today. So Rachel, please share your news.
I don't know if to consider this good news or bad news. But anyways, so the March meeting is scheduled for 26, right? But I caught that it lands on Prince Kuhiu holiday. So the options for the board, either we can switch the recess from April to March or recess both March and April. So I'll let someone do the motion, discussion and so on. Thank you.
Yes, member of.
I just want to verify, we as a neighborhood board are allowed to skip two months worth of meetings? Or is there going to be something that says that we have to have a meeting? Or whenever we take a recess, we can only do it one month, we have to have a meeting before and after?
Okay, so what happened was that because it's like on my side fault, you know. Normally, we shouldn't do a recess for two months, but because it's our side, we'll let this one go. But if it was like, because I, we have boards in the past where they had an agenda listed the wrong meeting location. And because it didn't, you know, list the proper location, they had to recess that month and they had to recess December as well, since that was the original month.
Any other questions? Okay, so members, I did contact Milani High School. We do have this facility for April 23rd. They did confirm that. So if you would prefer to just move the recess, the April recess to March so that we can all have, we can all observe the Prince Kuhiu holiday and not have state staff come in and work on the facility. Oh, I can't see. Okay, yes, Sabrina, I see your hand is raised.
So this board was already going to recess in April? I thought we were recessing in July.
Yes, so the vote was, there was, there were three recesses that this board voted on. One in December, one in, or we took a recess in July of 2024. We voted to recess December 2024 and April 2025.
And not in July of 2025?
No, because we are correcting that ongoing practice because the neighborhood board elections are on June. So we would be welcoming new board members and electing new officers in the July meeting, which is common practice across all thirty-three neighborhood boards. So we're correcting that, that issue that we've, you know, we've long taken recesses in July. And from the discussion, then the board elected not to recess the July meeting in 2025 because that will be an action taken by that next board.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we recess March 26th and meet on April 23rd.
Okay, so moved by Gustafson. Is there a second? Second by Nagamine. All right, any discussion to that effect? Raise your hands. All right, seeing and hearing no discussion. Rachel for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstention? Oh, sorry. Same. Okay, but did we have any nays? No? Okay, so with that, I will have. Let me just watch how many people are here. Okay, so that's twenty-two yes and zero no's and one abstain. So we'll switch the recess to March and have the meeting in April. Thank you.
All right, thank you, members, and thank you, Rachel, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, next, we will recognize Alex for community partnerships. Alex online? Okay, or not? Okay, we will, next up is Josie for Community Recognition and Service Awards.
Hi, I'm here. We need the board's input if there is somebody that you want recognized to either contact me or Chair Bass. That way we can get recognized. But at the moment, we have nobody. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Martina with the Walk Audit and Community Maintenance Form.
No report at this time, but just reminding everyone that the link to the form is on the agenda.
And remember, this, for members of the community, this is a link that you can just plug in. And if you see any issues in the Milani area, the whole town of Milani, inclusive of YPO Acres and Melamanu, if there are issues that the city or the state can, would need to maintain or even the army. If you see these problems while you're walking, that's why we call this the Walk Audit. While you're taking your casual walk, please take a photo, you know, if there's a broken sidewalk, if a tree is overgrown, if there's a sign that needs to be replaced. This is a great way to streamline it through our board to our committee chair and to the city and the state respectively. So please feel free to use that, that form to expedite things. Thank you, Martina. Next up, we have Trevor for Planning, Zoning, Sustainable Development and Climate Resilience.
No report this month.
Okay. All right, any questions for Trevor? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Next up, Skylar for Transportation and Opo.
I placed on the Google Drive all of the policies as well as procedures that were requested for changes through the Opo, through the meeting, as well as all the PowerPoint. It's all on the Google Drive. Got any questions, just reach out to me and let me know.
Questions for Skylar? Okay. Next up, Dennis for Military Affairs and Emergency Management.
Seeing as I just returned this morning at 10 o'clock, I have no report.
Any questions for Dennis? Okay. Darsha for Health, Houselessness and Human Services.
No report, Chair, but thank you very much for allowing Val to present today.
Yes, thank you for organizing that presentation. Thanks to you and thanks to Val. Much, much appreciated. All right, next up, we got Sabrina from Parks and Recreation.
No report, Chair.
Okay. And finally, last but not least, Marilyn for Education.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to give an abbreviated report because I did have reports the last two months and we put them in the website. This is out of our district, but there is a new crosswalk up on Nehi Ula Parkway near Mililani Ike School. So just be aware if you're driving up there that there is a new crosswalk and children would be crossing. Then the rest of the things are things that all the elementary schools and maybe the middle school participated in this month. Valentine's Card Day, they created Valentine's Day cards for IHS. They participated in National History Day. They had a huge turnout for Character Counts there. That was just last weekend. And they're having, various schools are having McDonald's Teacher Night. So those are activities that are occurring in our community. But one of the top ten swim teams in the swim teams in the state is Mililani High School. And it was remarked at a meeting recently that we are the only one that has no pool. So legislators out there, think about that, putting that in your next CIP. Thank you.
Members, any questions for Marilyn? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you, Marilyn, for your report. Okay, it's 8:19 and we're going to go into elected officials reports. Is Nestor here for Congressman Case's office? Members, Congressman Case was in the district and hosted a town hall, I think it was last month. So there was pretty good turnout. Saw some board members there, so thank you for being in attendance. And I did thank him for his attendance and Nestor always working with our board. Okay, next up, Tony for representing the governor's office. She is not here, okay. Well, we have Tracy here representing Mayor Blangjardi. Welcome.
Okay, good evening, Chair Bass, members, Tracy Kubota, Mayor Rick Blangjardi's representative. Okay, I have one response from last week's, I mean, last month's meeting, and this is regarding your question on rail. So this one was, board member was seeking clarification on how much longer will taxpayers be responsible for funding the rail system? Is there an option to shut it down? And so what are the implications? And additionally, are taxpayers essentially committed to supporting its long term? So I'm going to read it as it's reported, so bear with me because it's a several part question. Okay, so for the first part, how much longer will taxpayers be responsible for funding the rail system? This is an ongoing commitment to fund the skyline rail system. This is from Hart, yeah. The construction of the rail system by Hart is funded primarily by federal funds, ah who general excise taxes and statewide transient accommodations taxes. and statewide transient accommodations taxes. The current GT and TAT funding is set to expire in twenty thirty. Skyline operations and maintenance costs are funded at the city's general fund with supplemental funding from the Federal Transit Administration. Currently, only the first phase of Skyline is operational. A second segment is expected to open in late twenty twenty-five, providing rail service to the airport and Pearl Harbor. In twenty thirty-one, Skyline is expected to be in service along Dillingham Boulevard and through downtown Honolulu into Kakaako, consistently providing transit from East Kapolei to the major employment center of downtown Honolulu in approximately forty minutes. This service will provide a safe and reliable transportation option for all who residents and visitors for many years to come. Public transit systems have always required taxpayer funding for operations and maintenance. The Skyline Rail System is designed to move transit riders more quickly at less, best cost per mile to all taxpayers. Next question, is there an option to shut it down? And if so, what are the implications? No, there are no plans to stop the construction of the rail system or the operations of Skyline. The multimodal system is designed to serve commuters for decades to come. Additionally, are taxpayers essentially committed to supporting it long term? Yes, as addressed in the first question about the Skyline Rail System, will provide service to Waho residents and visitors for many years and decades to come. Often overlooked is the fact that the construction of the Skyline Rail System was designed to be paid off when construction is complete. Very few, if any, US rail systems can similarly claim. Um, and I think that's it for that. If you have any other questions for next month, I can take it back.
Members of the board, members of the community, are there any questions for, uh, city and county of Honolulu and the mayor's office? Emil?
Uh, just follow up for the rail future. Uh, the rail in California is being attacked by the new Department of Efficiency. Do you think, you know, rail in Honolulu can be also a target?
Is, was that a question?
A question. Yeah, if, if, you know, if you received some letters or something, some warnings or something, I don't know. I mean, because it's very not, it's not very efficient as it is. So I wonder if it's gonna be one of the targets of the Department of Efficiency, because they are already attacking other rail systems.
Okay.
Which takes forever to build and costs a lot of money.
Got it, thanks.
See, Krumi has a question. Go ahead.
Hi, Trace. So about six months ago, I, I reported, um, a sign that was down on Pu'ahe'ahe and VQ Street. And the sign is still not up, uh, and.
Street sign is a.
Street sign.
The name of the street.
Yeah, so it's a cross, uh, the cross section between, uh, of Pu'ahe'ahe and VQ.
Okay.
Um, it's like right down from the YWCA, uh, YMCA, excuse me.
So it's just the name, the name on the street sign, that one, yeah, it's that, okay.
And then, uh, last week on the same street, there was an accident and they knocked down this, another sign further up. So that would be on Ha'alohe and Pu'ahe'ahe.
Pu'ahe'ahe and Ha'alohe, okay.
Les, do you have a question?
Yeah, uh, yeah, Trace, maybe you can take this question back. Do you foresee any, uh, uh, tax fees being added on to the rail as we continue down, uh, building the other sub-sections that are coming up? Right now, I, when I'm working and I'm delivering and doing things, I, I don't really see anybody catching the rail. I'm lucky to see a couple of people on the rail every day and it doesn't look like it's cashing in so far. But I'm just wondering if the tax will be raised on the, uh, as we move along with the rail process. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Members, are there any other questions? Members of the board, members of the community, any questions for the city and county and the mayor's office? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I see Pooh is online for representing Councilmember Okimoto's office, and Erin?
Hi, uh, good evening, Allah Chair and, uh, Vice Chair and Allah Board. Uh, there are important dates and links in the chat, uh, the council member and our staff. Uh, we had a great time this weekend participating in the Milani Complex Schools Character Counts Fair. Uh, the city council had their first meeting of, of the year on, of January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the council held a public hearing on Mayor Blangardi's appointments to lead the city departments. Uh, we had full council today and recognized Never Quit Dreaming. Uh, they're Milani, Milani-based and they're, uh, an autism center, the first autism center in Hawaii, uh, who use sports programs, special events, and collaborations to help special needs kids discover their inner strength. Um, some of the, uh, bills and resolutions that were considered, uh, the council member, um, introduced one, Resolution twenty-five dash four. Uh, that was to ask City Order to conduct a performance audit of the Fire Plans Review Revolving Fund. Uh, Bill nineteen is relating to housing, establishing a resident preference in the city's housing programs. Uh, Resolution twenty-five dash three reaffirms the city's policy that the, that municipal solid waste landfill should not be located in proximity to underground drinking water. And Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-five requesting the city administration to submit the updated twenty twenty-five local hazard mitigation plan to the city council. I think the chair mentioned, uh, the good news that the new park closure signs, uh, were up. Um, uh, a constituent emailed asking about a dead tree, dead trunk tree, um, in, on Kahala Street cul-de-sac. Uh, we're currently getting, uh, interfacing with, uh, the administration on that. And we have also asked for the crosswalk behind Kipapa Elementary School to be repainted. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to, uh, take them back. Oh, actually, uh, I don't want to speak for DTS as well, but we had a meeting with them last week and we did ask them about the, uh, if they're, you know, expecting any federal cuts. They did say that, um, if the money has already been pretty much appropriated, they don't expect it. But, you know, anything can happen within this administration, so.
All right, members, any questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office? Yes, Marilyn.
Thanks for coming. I was just wondering if there was any sort of movement in the city council on the fireworks works issue.
Um, I'll have to get back to you on that, but, uh, I, I know that there is a, a bill currently. Uh, they're trying to work out, um, easier ways for the HPD to, uh, to, I guess, uh, marry the state's policy and the city's policy. Currently, the state, uh, currently, the city al- allows for fines up to, I think it was two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty dollars. But, uh, I needed to, uh, look in on that. I know the state, uh, allows for fines up to a thousand dollars or something like that. So their, their, the current policies don't inter, intermatch very well. So there is a bill that's trying to make it easier for HPD to prosecute these people without having to, um, uh, have necessarily the, be on site, seeing them light off the firework.
Hey, thank you.
All right, I see Sabrina has a question. Go ahead, Sabrina.
Yes, I was wondering if, um, council member is aware of the issues regarding animal cruelty in this city and how video evidence cannot be used, um, against people who perpetrate animal cruelty? Does she have any intention of addressing that with any bills in the future?
Uh, we don't have any current bills, uh, but I can ask her and bring that to her attention.
Thank you. Any further questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office? Actually, I have a question, Erin. Uh, is there an update to the, the Milani Police Station resolution?
Uh, that's been, uh, that was passed and, uh, is being, um, uh, sent to, um, I have to look at the resolution itself, whoever it was, uh, meant to be sent to, but yes, that, that resolution has been passed.
Okay, would you please, uh, pass on to the council member? That was a, a, a resolution passed by our board, of course. And so, um, please keep us updated and email us so that I could distribute along to the board members, if in case anyone from our board would like to testify in support of that resolution.
Okay. Excellent.
All right, thank you so much, Erin. Much appreciated.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
Next up, we have Kelly Anaya representing Councilmember Wire's office. Welcome, Kelly.
Chair of the board, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Uh, this had a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Um, Councilmember, um, honored Captain Clifford Fane Kavaiola Chillingsworth at last month's, um, honorary certificate, um, program at the full city council. Captain Chillingsworth, um, spent nearly thirty years as a lifeguard on Oahu's North Shore. Um, also, as we approached the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget season, Councilmember wanted to let the community know that we are closely monitoring the federal funding changes and are working closely with city administration to ensure budget resiliency. Um, I believe I reported this out before, um, regarding the Belamanu Neighborhood Park. Um, we, Councilmember did appropriate funds for the, um, field lighting fixtures. Um, but unfortunately, the only update I have right now is that the project is currently still under review. Um, Council, Councilmember also wanted to share that, um, he's excited that the Ocean Safety Commission, uh, is making progress. Currently, the Managing Director's Office is reviewing resumes of all applicants. And Councilmember looks forward to, um, meeting the candidates for public hearing at council once five members are decided. And then, um, a couple of legislative updates, um, Bill fifteen, which would, um, establish a cesspool conversion grant program to lessen the financial hardships, um, on our families. This measure passed first reading. Bill eighteen, uh, which would restrict the sale of single-use plastic bottles at vending machines at city facilities. This measure also passed first reading. And, um, Bill sixty-one, which, um, would prohibit motorized vehicles from doing wheelies on public roadways, has passed second reading at, um, this month's full council. Um, likewise, how, um, Councilmember Okimoto's office mentioned Resolution twenty-five zero zero three regarding the, um, solid waste landfills that should not be located above our drinking water sources. Councilmember wanted to, um, highlight House Bill nine six nine, which would prohibit the construction and modification and expansion of landfills near or above aquifers, as well as Senate Bill four three eight, which would prevent any landfills from being sited over any aquifers or prime agricultural lands. Um, that concludes my report. If anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I'd be happy to take them back.
All right, members of the board, members of the community, are there any questions for Councilmember Wire's office? Skylar?
Hi, just quick question.
Hi.
When you said motorized vehicles, uh, riding on.
Mopeds.
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 Is that anything that has two wheels that has a motor? Or are we designating it as it has to be motorcycle, moped, and an electric bicycle without pedals? And that's what's considered a motorized vehicle?
It, it is, um, it is specifically written in motorcycles and mopeds.
So if it's an electric motorcycle, or if it's an electric bike, right, that means there's no pedals on it, that would cover that. But as soon as it has pedals, because it's now considered a bicycle, that you don't need a actual driver's license or anything else to use, that would not be considered a motorized vehicle, correct?
Yeah, I would need to look into that. I'm, I'm not sure of the language on that.
Any other questions from board members, members of the public, or Councilmember Wire's office? Actually, Kelly, while you're here.
Yes.
Uh, you did, uh, provide a quick update as, in terms of legislation related to the landfills. What is the status update generally on the landfill issue in the North Shore area? Since that was robust discussion in the previous meeting, I know that there are questions both to Department of Environmental Services, um, when the director was here, as well as Board of Water Supply in January. So is there any update on that?
Um, as far as I'm concerned, no. I, I haven't heard anything new at this point, but I can double-check for next month's meeting. If there's anything, I can.
Okay. Thanks.
No problem.
Okay, next up, thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you.
We have, uh, Trevor from Senator Kidani's office.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the public. Uh, my name is Trevor Nagamine. I'm here on behalf of Senator Mishoki Doni tonight. Um, just a few highlights from her newsletter. So some of Senator's bills that are currently moving in session is, um, uh, one of them is SB thirteen hundred, so this would include a subsidy for, um, asset in limited income constrained and employed households. Uh, this is a bill that has already passed third reading in the Senate and is currently pending hearing in the House. So, so we'll probably see it start moving again, you know, once, um, the crossover deadline comes and goes next week. Uh, my other bill of senators that, that is also moving is SB thirteen ninety-one. This is, um, continuing funding for the DOE's donors choose app. And so this is, um, this is an app that allows the public to donate school supplies to teachers. And so this bill is pending third reading next week, Tuesday, uh, March fourth. Yeah, sorry, I'm boring this because I have like, I'm like, I have like a mild cold right now. Um, other than that, trying to keep it brief, um, does anyone have any questions?
Members of the board, members of the community, are there any questions? Marilyn, followed by Skylar.
Uh, thank you, Trevor. Um, I'm gonna ask the same question. What is moving on fireworks and crossing over in the Senate?
Um, I can get back to you at our, in April.
Well, that's kind of a long wait. Thank you.
Okay.
Skylar.
Uh, so there was a CIP passed a while ago regarding, uh, sidewalks, uh, to, from Lani Kuhana to Meheula along Kamahama Highway, right?
Hmm, hmm.
Uh, I just want to know what's the status? Like, do they have a date yet? What's, when is it gonna start doing, just to make, you know, the city more walkable?
So this is the CIP for a sidewalk along Camp Highway in Milani? Yeah, yeah, I can look into that.
Between Lani Kuhana and Meheula.
Okay.
So we know it was released, Trevor, right? We just wanna know, when is DOT gonna begin construction?
Yeah, okay.
I see that Anne Freed has a question. Go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, Trevor, so this is, this, uh, SB two-two-seven, SB one is moving. And it, it, this is hopeful, because it establishes an enforcement division responsible for fireworks. A question, which I guess maybe you can't answer, but I, I'm gonna ask this of all of our legislators from now on, is what are the rules of evidence? You know, as, you know, it has to change that they can't just see it. You know, if, if they, if they have to see it, you know, by the time they get there, it's already gone. So, um, I guess I didn't see in the language of the bill anything relating to a change in the rules of evidence. So if you could find that out, I would appreciate it.
I'm sorry, so your question is, is there anything that would change the Pawai rules of evidence?
Yes, about having to see fireworks in order to cite and or arrest.
Okay.
Okay, members of the board, members of the community, are there any other questions for Senator Kidani's office? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Trevor.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a representative here for Senator Dela Cruz's office? I don't see anyone online. Okay, and we'll move on to representatives.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, Charles, hello.
I'm here. Yeah, hi. Hey, I'm, I'm filling in for, I'm filling in for Malcites and I know where it's. Uh, so thank you, uh, Chair and Vice Chair and board members. Um, so I guess the main topic would be fireworks. Uh, the WAM Committee had passed two bills that are going to see the Senate. Um, one tomorrow and one hopefully next week. Um, SB two-two-two, SB one appropriates money for the illegal firework tax force. Um, this is the day of tax force to June thirtieth, twenty thirty. And over the next five years, the tax force will have to do a study and report to the legislature every year. And, uh, tomorrow, um, for a final Senate vote before going over to the House. And over two hundred and twenty-seven, uh, thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven hundred thousand pounds have, uh, since twenty twenty-three. The second fireworks bill is Senate Bill thirteen twenty-four, which establishes criminal offenses for general fireworks and pyrotechnic prohibitions in this degree. This includes sending and receiving fireworks by air delivery, distributing fireworks or articles of pyrotechnics to permit holder, extraction of pyrotechnic firework, um, and refusal to provide identification or violating carrier requirements. Penalties are also, um, heightened if someone is seriously injured or killed. Another ser-, um, another issue that we've, uh, found that's common was, um, e-bikes. So the WAM Committee passed SB one-one-seven, SB two, which related to transportation. It defines electric bikes and motorcycles. It prohibits, um, people under the age of fifteen from using certain e-bikes. And it prohibit, uh, it prohibits people from the, under the age of eighteen from using electric motorcycles. It increases the helmet age from sixteen to eighteen. Electric motorcycles need insurance policy, and this bill is also being heard on the Senate. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Charles. Members of the board, members of the public, are there any questions for Senator Dela Cruz's office? Les? Les, followed by Marilyn, go ahead, Les.
I want to ask you about the fireworks bill. Is there anything in that bill that has people looking where the shipments are coming in, where it could be shipped in at the docks area, or it could be flown in? I think you mentioned that already, but how they would implement some kind of a plan to, because passing a law ain't going to solve the problem. We have to get to the where it's coming in and who's assisting it.
Hmm.
Again, does that address that in the, any one of the bills?
Um, I, I mean, like you said, SB thirteen twenty-four does have a sending and receiving parks by air delivery. I think it would have to be with the tax force like of how they're going to tie fireworks, but I can get on the second part of your question of how they're going to go up the docks.
Can you get back to me on that? Because it's important that we have somebody implement a plan on the waterfront where the deliveries are taking place and at the airport, because once we stop that, we will stop illegal fireworks in Hawaii. Making another law just to find people and waste money and taxpayers' money is not going to do it. We have to stop it at the source. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Definitely.
On board members? Anne, go ahead. Anne, you're on mute.
Thank you.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Same, same thing, Charles. So I'm more interested, most interested in SB two-two-seven. In my opinion, and I think probably the opinion of many people, we've had enough task forces. They've already made their recommendations. You know, I think we, the money, if the money would be better spent, so that's my question to dovetail off of the last speaker's question is, is there money being appropriated for inspectors at the ports as a part of this bill? Because that's, I mean, that's one of the, and the other question again, I'm not seeing specifics about changes in the, although I'm hearing that that might be, I'm just not reading it, it might be the case. Changes in what is required to prosecute, cite, find something other than seeing somebody do it by the police officer? That's my question. Have they changed the rules of evidence?
Okay.
Are they going to fund more people at the ports?
Thank you, Anne. Let, let Charles answer.
Okay.
Yeah, it kind of goes back what they're doing at the docks and at the water. I can get back to you. Neither myself or Malachi can answer that question in April. But to go off of, I forgot to say, all of the, all of Senator's landfills, SB four-three-eight, SB four-four-six, and SB four-four-eight all pass through the WAM, and they would be being heard on the Senate floor. I know you asked representatives, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, I see Josie had her hand up. Go ahead, Josie.
To be, but that's okay. My question was, the money's going to go to the task force, and we're talking the state task force that's going to be run by Mike Lambert?
Yes, that's the task force, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Not start in March, but we all need to give him a chance. And if I had to pick anybody, he would be the number one person to pick to take care of fireworks. Thank you.
All right, are there any final questions for Senator Delacruz's office from the board or from the public? Please raise your hand. Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Charles, for your report.
Thank you.
I see that Representative Matsumoto.
All right, just trying to find. I got it. Can you hear me?
We can hear and see you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm not able to be in person with you all tonight. My kids have caught the flu like most of the other children in the area, and so with them, but I had dropped off my newsletter, so I hope I have that, you have that in front of you. And you also should have the PDF with you. And so you have two newsletters from me. One is my Neighborhood Board Update. You can kind of look through that, the different events that we have done over the course of the last month. And so just wanted to give you a look at that. There is an important update. I know this is the Maoka Emergency Access Road, but we had talked about it before with this neighborhood board, so the the road has changed. So the Department of Transportation and the Department of Transportation Services will begin grading a gravel road, as you see in the map there, and we will be also having this map on repmatsumoto.com. So if anybody who's listening, you can take a look at it. So I know there was a lot of discussion before about the road going through the dog park. It is no longer going through the dog park. It is going all the way around. And so the work for this ramp connection will take a little bit longer when they do the full thing, because there's, it has to be drainage improvements. And so they're currently coordinating with the city and county for the necessary permits, and they're looking to start in March. So we're going to keep you guys updated. So the first phase will be that gravel road is the emergency access road, and in the future, the city and county plans to create an express express bus route through the area, which will then be paved. So we'll continue to keep you updated as we get updates. But that's one of the main things to look at in that report. You also have my bill package mailer in front of you that highlights thing, the bills that we introduced this year. On the front of that, we have, again, as we do every year, our State Capitol Talkin' Tour, which is Thursday, March twentieth, from ten AM to twelve-thirty. Again, this is during spring break, so if any of the students want to come down, they can come down to enjoy this opportunity and all the different community members. So we're going to tour the state capital. You know, we get to go, the Lieutenant Governor often opens her office as well as the governor, and so we'll be get to do that. So that's Thursday, March twentieth. And then for our, mark your calendars, I know it's a little ways away, but April tenth, we'll be having our Legislative Update Town Hall at Milani Maoka Elementary School. That's from six PM to seven-thirty. You can go to the next page where you see all of our bills that we put in this year. We still have three bills moving through the legislature and the legislative process. But again, as always, these bills were based off of our community survey that we put in, and the top issues that people shared with us. And this year, those issues were cost of living, affordable housing, crime, homelessness, government corruption, and traffic. We also, you'll see an area that has constituent requests for those who filled out the survey. We also had specific requests from constituents that we put in as bills. And on the very back page, you see a few of the survey results. For the full survey results, you can go to repmatsumoto.com and look it up there. And in the interest of time, I will end my presentation there.
Thank you, Representative. Members of the board, members of the public, are there any questions for Representative Matsumoto? Skylar?
Hi, regarding the dog, well, question regarding now the gravel road. So gravel roads are great in dry areas. Mililani is not one of those areas. So my question is, what are they going to do to ensure, one, that this new path that they're building has either a French drain or some type of water mitigation system, so all the gravel doesn't run out? Because you're, you're coming from a very high point to a very low point, you're digging a gravel little ditch, which all the water is going to be already dumping into, because that is our water catchment area with the dog park and the other parks that are over there. So what is their mitigation regarding that? And is there a way to maybe move up this paving of the road? So that way, it's not, we're going to wait, we're going to, we're going to gravel this thing out. The rain's going to come. It's going to now put rocks on the H-two entrance going northbound for all those individuals. And now you're going to have to be dodging those rocks in the car versus if they just immediately gravel it, pave it, then we don't have to worry about that, and then we can just think about the rest for the water mitigation.
I will take that back to DOT. They are looking to do a presentation for the Maoka Neighborhood. The Maoka Neighborhood Board has asked for a presentation from DOT and DTS. And so when we get more information on that, I'll be sure to relay all of that to you, but I will bring that up to DOT and ask them about the timeline and the concerns about the gravel.
Any other questions from the board or the members of the public for Representative Matsumoto? Actually, I just wanted, for the public's awareness online, thank you, Representative, for mentioning it, that you, you emailed in the report, and this applies to all Senate offices, the cities, the city offices, all the representatives, the mayor, the governor's office. They transmit these reports, and so we put this on our Milani Neighborhood Google Drive, Neighborhood Board Google Drive. That's available online. You can check it anytime, and if you're curious, you want to go back to it. You can see it at the top of our agenda, so please go ahead and check there so that we can be online friendly as well. Without further ado, Representative Lachica, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. Chair, Vice Chair members, Trish Lachica, District Thirty-seven, good evening to you all. Few updates, so as mentioned by Kealaho West Oahu earlier, a big community site visit that we were able to do and outreach on January twenty-fourth, we're able to host the site visit with the US Army Garrison Commander Rachel, Colonel Rachel Sullivan and her team, the Honolulu Police Department District Three officers, her team with KWO, as well as the Hawaii State Department of Transportation, just to oversee the area, address ongoing concerns. We were hosted at the Okinawan Center. And then also we were able to provide some outreach, and thankfully, this happened right before all of those strong storms had occurred, so we were able to get the individuals vacated before, yeah, the, those, the strong winds and the rain. They have not returned to the area. However, it is still an ongoing issue, so we do have, I do have a request in the capital improvement budget to put in a request through the Hawaii Department of Transportation, just to continue to address the unauthorized encampments in the area. Our issue is that if you go down, there's just this wide, seven to like eight-foot flat like section that's down there, that's really just like prime area. And so we're trying to like work on some planning kind of design solutions as to what we should do with the US Army Garrison Hawaii. And then with Rep Matsumoto and Councilmember Val Okimoto, we were able to just have an amazing time this Saturday. Very exhausting though, to just be able to just entertain and also participate and engage with all seven schools in the area from the Milani Character Counts Fair this weekend, but it's just a great opportunity to see the community and see all the kids. And I had a great bucket toss game, and my eight-year-old had a wonderful time managing it for a whole hour. So that was a lot of fun. In my newsletter, so you can see the House introduced over fifteen hundred bills. A little over half are about dead at this point in the legislative session, so we are almost at the halfway point. Bills are still moving. We're going to reach the crossover point soon, where the House and Senate bills will cross over to the other chamber, and then the Senate bills will get re-referred to the House Committee. So we'll be involved in that. Inside, you'll see the results on the left of our affordability in Hawaii Cost of Living Survey. As soon as we process all the qualitative responses, we'll put them up on the website too. But you can see here the respondents we've received, and then by neighborhood, but just highlighting, I mean, this isn't new to you, but you can see just the results of how people feel about cost of living issues in our community. Over half, I mean, nearly half worry about the safety and future of our Kiki, and just the dissatisfaction of and how folks are just struggling to keep up. And then top affordability challenges are housing, insurance, and healthcare for our community. Legislative package, we have a whole bunch of bills still moving, but more, a lot more than half are on education and early childhood education because of my committees, but I also have housing as well as public safety and transportation. So my school bus bill on House Bill eight-six-one, this is Department of Transportation Admin Bill, this would put into statute governor's emergency proclamation that would allow the Department of Transportation to expand the available pool of drivers by allowing vehicles other than a school bus, such as motorcoaches, minivans, and other types of vehicles to transport students in the, in times of emergencies. We also have a red light camera in school zones bill, House Bill twelve-thirty-one. So this would prioritize the, now that the statewide red, red light camera program is rolling out statewide, this is requesting prioritization in school zones. So in the last couple of months, there have been already two crashes on the, this corner of the Milani High School, crashing directly into the the light, the traffic light pole right here, and so this would just prioritize the installation at school zones, and then any fines collected would be deposited in the Safe Routes to School Fund, so that would go back into public safety in our school zones. And the final one would be, what else did I want to highlight for this one? Um, oh, our school facilities database bill, it's House Bill six-three-six. So this is just highlighting some transparency for our capital improvements projects with the Department of Education. It creates a public database planning system that would track school facility repairs, ensure an efficient use of not just how we make decisions, but also the use of taxpayer funds and where they go. And then just in the back, just had a great opportunity to just partner with Milani High School Students HPD, and then Milani Rotary and the Neighborhood Board, I mean Neighborhood Board, sorry, Neighborhood Security Watch was there as well on February tenth for our Public Safety Sign waving event on Meheula Parkway. So with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Representative. Members of the board, members of the public, are there any questions for Representative Lachica? Okay, I, and Mel, go ahead.
Quick question. I mean, I was looking at the similar survey from Orin Matsumoto. And now the insurance is on both very high. So what can government do here in Hawaii to regulate the insurance business, insurance industry? Because obviously, they are taking advantage of us.
Is this for the condo and home insurance?
Home insurance, basically, but you know, home insurance specifically.
Yeah, right. So both Representative Matsumoto and I have hosted multiple like town halls on this one. It is very market-driven because of, you know, the way that the market is, you know, the way that the insurance market, you know, is, is, I guess, is structured, and it's based on several risk factors globally. But, you know, they do have the, the task force, as well as a program that they're trying to stand up through the Hawaii Hurricane and relief fund, that they're trying to not quite resolutely replace insurance, but provide another option that would hopefully provide another, you know, expand again the pool of available insurance for condos. There are several bills also, what wouldn't quite address like the full problem, but it would create some kind of, it would create some guardrails for condo associations as they increase fees. It would also enable them to be able to take on loans with like lower interest, you know, state-backed like interest. You know, a, a interest rate so that they can prioritize. So a lot of the insurance companies, because like, for example, Nob Hill, right, five hundred-plus units, there's just no insurer that would insure the entire like property, and so you would have to stack it with multiple like insurers. And so a lot of these like projects, they're very dependent on making sure they cover a lot of the repairs, and so these are the types of programs like the state's looking at, okay, what are the other ways that we can bring down the the cost? So one of this is like, what are, can there be other ways where associations can borrow funds at a lower cost so that it kind of shifts the cost? But, right, there's, there's multiple bills moving, and we can probably look at what would make it through by end of session.
I see you have a couple of questions, so I'm sorry to cut you off. I see Anne has her hand raised, followed by Les, so go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, so just a quick comment on the insurance. So my condo, our condo is old.
Question, Anne?
Okay, yeah, I have two questions. Okay, so one is, again, do you have any more to say about the fireworks problem? The second one is my concern that I'm sure is shared, is what is doing, what are, what are we doing, what can we do to protect the agencies that deal with vulnerable populations like victims of domestic violence and victims of sex assault and Planned Parenthood that and Planned Parenthood that are are in danger of having federal funds cut? What are we doing to make sure that those highly important missions of those nonprofits can still do their jobs?
Thank you.
Fireworks and.
Yes. For the fireworks issue on the House side, there is a bill that would fund sting operations. So that one is still moving. The second one is it would enable drone technology, the use of like drones to be permissible evidence. So that is also still moving. I don't have the bill numbers, but I could probably get those back to you. I know those two bills are still moving and there's probably one. And then on the on the nonprofits, it is something that we are extremely concerned about. So we do have regular briefings from the executive branch. We will have members, I mean, our members of Congress that will be briefing us soon. So we had a recent briefing from Congresswoman Takuta, as well as Congressmember Case. Our senators will also be coming soon. We are already some finalizing some dates with the Senate. But we are holding dates to hold special session. This is just because we cannot wait until next session to take any action in the event that, you know, not just state agencies, but you know, anyone that may might need, you know, the legislative action. You know, we we basically will be convening to make those decisions. And we have also looked at potentially opening a second round of GIA funds. And so we're carefully, you know, monitoring the impact to, yeah, all our, all our different like agencies as well as nonprofits. So with the Hawaii Association of Nonprofit Organizations, HANO, they have been briefing us as well. Okay, Les, you have a question, followed by Marilyn.
Yeah, this is something that you probably can, you don't have to answer it now, but I want to know what what the bills that are on the House floor now have tax breaks for the residents, not just in our district, but in Hawaii. A list of the bills and you can bring it back next time. I don't expect you to have it.
Let me get back to you on that.
Thanks.
Marilyn, you have a question?
Thank you. Well, I just want to make sure that something meaningful passes out of the House this year. And if it doesn't, that there's plans for the future, like public education and the dangers of fireworks. You know, six people died, twenty people were injured, and the people that are alive still face terrible psychological and physical problems. It's, it's nothing to sneeze at. And I, I don't sense really from the legislature, not you particularly, a great deal of concern about this. And I'm hoping to see more in the future. Thank you.
I do, I'm sorry, I did remember for member Ross, for the, earlier you had mentioned the sidewalks from Lani Kohana up to Kualani. And the, that fund, CIP, was released in March of twenty twenty four. So the phase, there was a phase one, which was the installation of a missing crosswalk. And then the second phase is supposed to be advertised, so meaning it's open, their, Hawaii Department of Transportation is supposed to open it up for bid this spring. So we, I can follow up and see where they're at in the process. But I'm also have a meeting scheduled with Director Sniffin, because when we, I sit in the Transportation Committee, we were talking about complete streets. And so he was saying that they do have some designs planned for Cam Highway. So we, I would, yeah, I would let the neighborhood board know if that would be something that the neighborhood board would support, be considering to support in the future.
Thank you. As you know, as a neighborhood board member, that was a big issue for us, right? So thank you. I see other questions for Representative Lachica, Ed?
Thank you for coming, Representative. Just two questions real quick. Kind of caught my ear. You said there'd be a second round for nonprofits. Is, is that the GIA?
Yes, correct.
But that would be determined upon based upon completion of the budget though?
Correct. Right, right. So right now, it's like a wait and see.
Right, right.
Right. But the conversation, we, the conversation has been, we, let's try and make sure there is room. So we're having to make sure that there, you know, we're safe, kind of, we're reserving a pot in the event that we need to take action for special session.
Okay, and nonprofits will be notified of this?
Perfect.
And then my next question is that, thank you for the statistics, pretty alarming. Are there any bills at the top of your head right now that's going to address, for example, sixty percent feel the state has been ineffective at tracking affordability? Wow, that's quite a bit. Government's effort, cost of living, sixty one percent. That's huge. Are there any bills at the top of your head which are active at this time that is going to be addressing some of these issues?
There's a number of bills moving, really depends. But I think where the legislature feels really should be prioritized right now is those that would be the most vulnerable to the loss of, you know, the programmatic services that they're really dependent on. So a lot of our Ellis families, a lot of, a lot of the, you know, state benefits. So those who, you know, folks, yeah, I guess a lot of who are in the safety net. So right now, there's, there's different bills that are looking at shifting some of the tax credits and maybe looking at, you know, shifting the and redirecting those funds to make sure that it's, those funds are made whole.
So there'll be more, something more specific coming down the road when you, when you cross over, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Next month. Thank you. Oh, wait, when you, in April.
Okay, and I saw, remember Ross had a question. Go ahead.
Sorry, just because I saw it and SFA is here. Bill Thirty Nine regarding the SFA at pre-kindergarten. What? So my question is, are we doing the same thing like how we're doing for the teacher housing? They're looking at partnering with public and private entities to find places where we can build pre-K things and then it falls under Department of Education? Are you looking at just finding places that already do that and improving them? What specifically is SFA and Department of Education doing for this pre-K? And are we pushing this like how we did previously or like places that need it? And if those are the places that need it, are we going to be focusing in Milani or on the west side? Is there, is there anything in that bill that states any of these things?
Well, I'll, I'll invite Sherry over to talk about what they're currently doing. But this is House Bill Three Two Nine, basically puts into statute what they're currently already doing. So right now, they're already developing pre-K, they're already developing, you know, teacher workforce housing. Right now, the way that it's done is by legislative action. So they, we could, they can only work on it project by project via bill form. So what this does is kind of like puts into statute, okay, this is your response, you know, this is SFA's responsibility. And they're able to, you know, this gives them like, it's more sustained action. On the private, public-private partnerships that are ongoing right now through the Ready Kakee Program, there's also ongoing work there that Sherry can talk about.
So I can clarify a bit about our preschool initiative. So we have the authority to build and expand preschool capacity in facilities. And we can do it through a number of approaches. So we have done a lot of, for example, renovations of classroom on DOE campuses. So where there's been excess capacity in classrooms, we've converted them and renovated them for pre-K. And we've done sixty in the past two years. So we've been, we've, we've, we've done these renovations rapidly. And as a result, we've had these added seats for pre-K in our public schools. We can also expand capacity outside of public school campuses. There was a bill last year which allowed us to use or build preschool on any state property, which includes city property. So in those instances, we could build, for example, a preschool hub. And it could potentially be contracted out to a community provider. So it, it could either be a public pre-K or it could also be part of a community-based organization that does pre or early childhood education or early childhood, I guess it's called early childhood. So we have the ability to go beyond DOE campuses and expand preschool capacity. And it is in line with the Lieutenant Governor's Ready Kakee Initiative, which is trying to provide access to all three and four-year-olds. So the public-private partnership portion of that bill is just giving us a little more flexibility to be able to partner with private companies to help us expand this preschool facility capacity.
Are there any other questions for Representative Lachica? Martina, go ahead.
My question is, what are you planning to do with this data that you presented in your mailer? Because I have a concern that a hundred and eighty-four respondents is not an accurate representation of the community concerns because it's a small amount. So what are you kind of trying to do with this?
Right. So for this one, I mean, this went out via email and then newsletter. And these are the amount of respondents that we received. Every one of the one eighty-four, we're working through everyone getting a response back. So some of them had specific questions, community concerns, constituent requests. So those ones were able to, you know, provide some assistance on. A lot of them is just, you know, helping to really provide us some feedback on, you know, for example, food costs, transportation issues, insurance issues. And it just gives me a sense of, I guess, the, yeah, the, where the community, you know, is feeling on certain, certain issues. And then we're letting them know here are some of the bills that you want to testify on or take a look at and, you know, generate some testimony if it's something that they're interested in, in taking a look at.
Any other questions for Representative Lachica? Well, I'm almost sorry to ask, but I do have a question. It, it, and actually, I should have, to be honest, I should have also asked this to Rep Matsumoto, so I'm glad she's still online. And perhaps she can take this back as well. On the issue of the surveys, did you mail those out to the, your constituents?
Correct.
You did. Okay. How many constituents are there in your districts?
So the mailer went out to, I think, a little under nine thousand households.
Okay. So that's, I'm a little concerned by that, right? For both districts where one eighty-four of nine thousand is less than one percent, right? And I think the same could go for Representative Matsumoto, hers, I mean, three fifty-four of, I'm guessing it's the same amount, nine thousand, eight thousand, still under one percent. So it's really important these days that we hear from the community. And it, these, the feedback that you're seeing is not actually in total alignment for the Milani community, right? So generally, we would see the same concerns, cost of living, housing, crime, homelessness, right, insurance. It's not lining up across both districts and this is the same town. So that's why I had that question. But hopefully you can continue that outreach with your community so that we can get better responses from your constituency.
No, right. I mean, you know, I mean, it's everybody, you know, we always do. It's to the extent that we continue, it's very important for, you know, Rep Matsumoto and I to do this outreach and to collect as much feedback as we can. We cannot, you know, control how people provide the feedback back to us. It's very, very important to us that, you know, folks provide the feedback. It's in the same way as, you know, everybody gets their mail-in ballot. But as everybody knows, you know, the statewide voter, I mean, voting rate is at thirty-six, thirty-four percent. It's higher, much higher in our district. But everybody is busy, everybody has something to do. But, you know, when we do send out these, yeah, these mailers, the feedback that we get is so, so, so valuable to us. And so we, we're really, really grateful with the amount of the folks that do take the time to respond to the survey. And I know Waltton's one of them because I got the response back from him. So thank you. So I think it, it gives us tremendous feedback, doesn't it? Just inform how we vote, how we continue to engage. I do also meet anybody in, in, that has requests meetings with me in the community as well. So I'm open to, yeah, that feedback as well. And so if anybody would like to talk to office of specific concerns, as you know, our office is always open.
Well, thank you so much. I don't see any other questions. Okay. Thank you so much. That was a lot.
Yes.
But thank you for coming. I think everyone is excited.
See you in April, everybody.
All right. Next up, we have Representative Amy Peruso, who is online. Welcome.
Aloha. Yeah, you folks have covered a lot of ground. I'm gonna kind of pick up where you left off, which is around surveys and polling. We have a community survey that we've been conducting as well over the past, I would say, five years. But recently, I've started just doing singular polling questions just to, for two purposes, not that I think that I'm going to collect statistically significant numbers of responses that I would use to inform necessarily my voting or my policy framework. But as a way of kind of alerting the community as to what's being discussed in the legislature. So last month, our question was, had to do with cannabis. So do you support the legalization of cannabis? And it appears that that question is now moot. The, it died in the Senate yesterday. And then for February, the questions are about, do you support the legalization of gambling? So that's one question. And then do you support substantial pay increases for the governor, lieutenant governor, and legislators? So those are in my newsletter. I don't share them on social media just because I, I really want to get results that are specific to my district. But I, I do find that it, it does help the community kind of understand the big topics that we're working on this session. I wanted to also touch on what many of the board members were asking about with respect to fireworks. And I think Anne and others might be happy to hear about or might want to look up HB fourteen eighty-three. It's introduced by Rep Marioshi. And what I like about this bill is that it's pretty sophisticated and nuanced. So it creates multiple levels of graduated penalties for different kinds of offenses, right? So it moves from civil penalties to criminal. So, you know, you don't have this burden of evidence, right, to conduct a criminal or to press a criminal case. But you can issue tickets. So it would create a system that's akin to traffic violations that people just pay and there is a lower burden of evidence. So along with enhanced penalties for those kinds of activities that result in injury or death. And, you know, also includes funding for additional enforcement activity. So I think that's a measure to look at. Then I also want to go back to, way back to Kelly and talk about, she mentioned House Bill Nine Six Nine. So that is Rep Quinlan's landfill bill. And what that would do is she mentioned is prohibit the prohibit the.
Anne, would you please mute? We're getting some feedback from your camera. Thank you. Go ahead, Representative.
Okay, sorry. That would prohibit the citing of a landfill above an aquifer. But then also, the Environmental Caucus is, is moving two bills over to the Senate side, it looks like. The first is House Bill Seven Five Zero. And that, it really introduces and forces the state to kind of grapple with the possibility of working on EPR, which is really getting at the root causes of our waste management issues. So extended producer responsibility. And I feel like Danielle, you know exactly what I'm talking about, but. And I feel like um Danielle, you know exactly what I'm talking about, but um uh it, what it means in a nutshell is um having the producers take more financial responsibility for the recycling and uh reuse infrastructure, which in other jurisdictions has led these manufacturers to use different materials and um different technologies and um has led to better outcomes for their waste management systems. And the, the second important bill around um, you know, really addressing the root causes, is House Bill seven-five-one. And that's really about um creating uh higher standards, I would say, around um solid waste diversion. So essentially, this landfill issue has made me, I would say, like the garbage girl in, in the House. Um, I'm finding that I'm learning quite a bit about this, and I'm really grateful that I'm um serving as a vice chair of uh Energy Environmental Protection because it's a space where this conversation is very relevant. Um, and Anne, the bill number for the fireworks is House Bill fourteen-eighty-three. Um, I also wanted to mention um that uh Congresswoman Takuta came on the twentieth to Wahiwa. And um we had a really robust conversation about what's happening at the federal level. And um, you know, the Wahiwa Elementary Cafeteria was pretty full. And um there was a very authentic and, and I think very important conversation that happened that evening. And I'm very grateful for the Congresswoman for holding that space for us. Um, and, and this is my cat Sandy. And um uh I think that she talked a lot about um the impacts on our folks who are employed by the federal government. And she talked a, a, a great deal about um the impacts to um, you know, our, the funding for services to our most vulnerable. So in addition to what Trish was talking about, um, you know, we're, we're in the House, we are looking at um the extension of our work um over the course of the interim. So I think it might feel a lot more like a year-round job. Um, but I think it's gonna be really important because we are gonna have a lot of work to do. And we have only really just begun to tackle it this session. Um, one of the issues a, around that work, and, and she mentioned the possibility of reopening a second round of GIA's. But also, there are, I think, still a couple of bills moving. There might just be one bill moving that addresses the true cost situation for those nonprofit providers. And um we really have to uh better fund their work so that it's sustainable and so that we don't lose those providers. In Wahiwa alone, we've lost uh two houses as providers in recent years, just in the time that I've been in office because they cannot maintain, you know, the organization. Um, so I think that's important. Um, trying to think of anything, I mean, there's so much to share because we're moving towards crossover and third reading is happening, you know, any minute, so that'll be exciting. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and Sandy is as well.
Members of the, board members of the public, are there any questions for Representative Peruso? I see Anne has her hand up, go ahead, Anne.
This will be quick because you've covered almost everything I would want to ask. First of all, sweet kitty.
Yeah.
I like seeing people's animals on one. And the, the other thing is, this, the, I, I hear you because I'm hearing specifics, which is really good. Um, uh, but could you add any more enlightenment about um those programs that affect uh vulnerable women? You know, particularly those who suffer um gender-based violence.
Right, so interestingly, um, I introduced the Title IX bill this session that would have codified the Biden rules around Title IX in state law. Um, and that was not heard. Um, and I, I think that we are gonna face some real uh, we're gonna have some tough decisions, right? Because right now, I think there's, there's um, the dilemma is, uh, do we attract the ire of the federal administration? Or do we continue to do the work that we think is important? Um, or, I mean, can we, can we do the work that we think is important without attracting the ire of the, of the federal administration? So I think that uh right now, legislators are trying to figure out how to navigate this terrain because there is so much chaos and confusion. Um, and I think as things settle down a bit and um we get more guidance from our congressional delegation, but also from um our AG and um hopefully the governor and lieutenant governor, then we'll have more solid footing. And I, I, I think that what that's, my hope is that that second round of GIA's is gonna provide that kind of support. But also, we have the capacity to um just, you know, insert line items into the budget. Um, that's also a possibility. And, and I think we really need to start having those conversations and, and not just around protecting women, but we have a lot of folks who are increasingly vulnerable right now.
Members of the board, members of the public, are there any other questions for Representative Peruso? Please raise your. Anne, is your hand still up or? Yeah, okay, all right, seeing and hearing them.
Again, it's again, honey, it's again. So I just have one, one last question, and uh I don't know if you can answer this. But, but I will, if you don't answer, that's okay, I just put it out there. I'm hearing that the budget surplus was largely mythical.
So it wasn't a surplus, it was a carryover, I think it was mischaracterized. So it was simply a budget carryover, um, not a surplus. Um, and I do think, so the, oh, so, I mean, let's talk budget, I'm so excited. You should never have asked me that question. Um, but, so the council and revenue estimation is gonna come out on March twelfth. So we're gonna see what they think about our forecast. It might um soften, uh, so it might be a weaker forecast. And that will affect really um what we're doing with our budget. But we will have already passed the House budget over to the other side. So those two things will happen actually the same week. So that week will be very interesting um in terms of fiscal analysis and, and budgetary work. So there's, yeah, there's a lot happening right now.
All right, I think that concludes all the questions for you, Representative Peruso, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to announcements, folks. So our next board meeting, we're gonna recess, friendly reminder, it's mistyped on our agenda. So we will be recessing our March meeting, and we did take a vote. And our next meeting, and that is, we are recessing the March meeting again because of, that is the Prince Kuhio holiday and spring break here at DOE. Uh, we will be meeting again here at H Building and online on April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, seven-thirty PM. Um, there's, uh, of course, you can tune into the broadcast on YouTube and on Olelo. Uh, with that, our meeting is adjourned at nine-twenty-nine, thank you, members.